Visiting beautiful Park County stopped by the Vintage Beehive at their new location. One fifteen East High Street, Rockville, Indiana. We have antiques, vintage items, homemade, handmade, and handcrafted. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here again this evening to discuss the town's business. We ask that as we go forward, you would guide and direct us to make the best decisions for the town and its residents. We also ask that you would be with our utility department workers and our police department and fire department volunteers to just keep them safe in these times there are crazy things going on. And we just ask you would guard them and guide them. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Well, welcome everybody. Start on our list. Y'all got a copy of the minutes from the last two meetings? Brad and Minus.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the previous meetings from nine sixteen and ten seven twenty-one with the corrections.
I'll second.
Claims and warrants. September end of the month is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. October twenty-first meeting, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-seven and fifty-two cents.
Make a motion claiming warrants.
On favor? Thank you. Okay, payroll warrants. Nine twenty-three, nine thirty, ten seven, ten fourteen, ten twenty-one. Any amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred, nine dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make a motion we accept those payroll warrants.
Second.
On favor? Bank reconciliation at the end of September. Utilities, two million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and two cents. The town is eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, twenty-three dollars and twelve cents. Payroll, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. And customer deposits, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On favor? And one billing adjustment, a hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Yep, so, my name's JD, I work with Community Action Program. And last year I came and spoke to the town about possibly putting in four more units of our senior living right next door here. And so, it's came where, you know, I'm back and asking for support from the town in regards to a couple of different things. But I kind of need a point of contact and just kind of open up that line of communication with the town to see. I know there's the old septic system that I think is kind of a concern on that property right now. I can't really build on top of that. And the other thing would be, I believe it was in the past you helped with Stanley Drive with that end. Is that right understanding? I didn't know if you could help with continuing that drive. I know there's already kind of a T intersection right there, but trying to continue that back so that we could have parking back in that area as well. So, that's with our grant application with the donation match. So, I was hoping that we could, the town could help us out with that. The grant application hasn't opened up yet, but I looked, I anticipate that it's going to open up sometime in between. So, that it's going to be due February to May. This last year it kind of got postponed a little bit, so I don't know how that's going to look exactly this round. But I expect that to kind of open up here soon. So, you know, just kind of trying to get things ready so that way we can not get crunched for time like I was the past couple of years. So, trying to get ahead of it if I can.
It would probably help if the town did support the grant application by agreeing to asphalt the street as well, wouldn't it? It would also support, show support from the town if we did do that. And we did supply that before. We did do that before.
We just done the street from where it starts coming out this way. We didn't do anything inside because that's private property.
Yeah, we just went to right where your property started building and then that went on with the thing. Now, what you're saying, we could, as far as I'm concerned there, go back and do the same thing to where, and then your parking is yours. See while I'm getting that, I mean, we could go by so many feet toward the other where yours would join in front of your building. Is that right, Dick? Am I saying that right?
I don't think, I don't, I mean, I'm thinking it's private property. Once it goes past that, that's private property. That's not town street or anything.
To go to the left?
Yeah, I mean, that...
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. That is, that property, because they moved over to the back of the center.
Oh, yeah, well, you could dedicate it as a public street. You could donate it as, you know, it would be your property and then it would be ours. Everything, all the streets at one point were private property. At some point. So, it's up to you guys. I mean, I don't know what that would be, that would be fairly expensive to put a road in generally. But, you know, if you had some cost, do you have any cost on, on anything?
No, we're still at the beginning phase, so.
And then septic, I don't know, I mean, there would have been a septic field out there for the community centers, so. I don't remember finger system.
It was that coil in that mound.
It's that hump that's still there.
That's all it, and it's all this, just there out the hump. It wasn't those says fingers running way down there, no. It was that coil.
I don't remember. I remember it was a big deal putting it in, but getting it permitted. You know, if we had some cost with those items, I think it'd be easier to make a decision about what the town might be able to do. Just thinking out loud, but.
And how many feet it would be from Stanley over to where you guys?
Yeah, we could do that.
Would take off, right?
Yeah.
But, yeah, we're, we're forward to doing what we can and helping get another.
We just have to do within our budget in order to help our town, you know. And, and I know that there are people who are, who would like to live there in that area, so.
Who would be the point of contact? Who would be the best one to try to reach out to at least moving forward? For approval or something, you know, like usually I've talked to the mayor or something, I'm not sure how.
As far as an actual approval, that'd go through town council.
If you want to give information, you could send it to my email, because I always forward it to them with the exception of one. And then Brad McGranahan's our superintendent, so you might want to take his number two email. We haven't allowed him to do that yet.
I consider email introducing you, your exchanging your two emails would be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I guess, does anybody have any questions for me before?
How many units are in that last space? I can't remember.
We're looking at about four units. There's not a whole lot of room left over, so I think that's about as much as we can put in there. And assuming we can do something with that septic system.
This may be done. When you say four, is that four?
Two duplexes.
Two duplexes.
I think that's what.
So, if everything comes, comes out good, what kind of timeframe are you talking about?
I would say they could be built in about two years. There's a long process to get the grant together, get approved, and then get going on, you know, get going on everything. Then it's a matter of getting it constructed, so if I had to guess, a couple of years.
Who is the grant through?
IHCPA.
Okay.
Which gets their funding from HUD.
Okay. Great. That's awesome.
Get that information to us.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to tell you, you don't have to stick around. Nobody does. After you get done saying something.
Go eat your supper.
Well, thank you. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Sandy?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was getting their emails. Construction done there, so I didn't forget. I just wanted to share a couple initiatives that we're working on out of our office. The first thing that has already started is a housing needs assessment for all of Park County. That is going to be a tool that any of us can use, talking about housing across the county. And for example, with what JD was talking about with his application to IHCPA, that's a document that he can put alongside his request that shows that we've done the due diligence and checking on what type of housing we need. I'm going to assume it's going to show some senior housing, income-based. But that is, it could be used by someone with JD's organization. It could be a private developer. It could be people, you know, looking to create rental apartments. It could be about anything. It just depends on what the study ends up showing us. So, we've started it. The anticipated end date is March of twenty-two. And it's being led by Purdue Extension Community Development. So, we're anticipating some pretty good data based on their sources for that coming out. As a part of that effort, there's going to be a two-piece thing where we'll be getting public input. So, there will be a survey that will be made available to all residents. Or if you work in Park County but may not live here, you know, what is it that you're looking for that you didn't find here to maybe live? So, there'll be a survey. We're going to try to do it online as best we can, but we will have paper copies available. So, it, it might get rolled out in the sense that we might bring some paper copies maybe to the utility office and have that available if people stop in. They're going to be doing a press release, I guess is the best word for it, you know, just about the whole effort with the link to the survey information to get to that, to get that out. The second prong of that is we're going to do three focus groups, so these are invite-only sessions. We'll probably hold one in the northern part of the county, southern, and then central. I may be coming to you to ask for the building for the focus group or something. We haven't quite decided on places. As I said, I'll be invite-only. We're looking for probably ten to fifteen participants in those meetings. And it's, we're just making smaller groups so that we can have a really good conversation and use the survey to get input from the general public. The people that we'd like to attend, and I'm asking you to kind of think about, people, you know, that you know around the area that might be good participants. So, that have some, some either desire to work with housing as an advocate or as a developer, as somebody that likes to invest in their community, owns buildings, likes to build, you know, just any of the above. Utilities, things like that. So, that's kind of the host, they're the audience that we're looking for in the focus groups. So, those are supposed to be scheduled through like November, December. We're working on finalizing the survey right now, so the next thing we'll do is get those dates set. Would ask for your support in doing this and helping communicate and giving some suggestions of attendees. So, that's, that's the first one. For, for that study, we were able to utilize some funding from the Park County Redevelopment Commission as proceeds of a property that we sold, the Leon Bryant property. And then also Partnership Park County got a two thousand dollar grant from COBANK. We, we put those funds into the study. And the town of Rockville picked up the remaining like eighteen hundred dollars of it. So, in total, we spent just under ten thousand on the study. So, I just want to share where those funding sources came from. And then the second one we're doing, hopefully, we just got the proposal for a strategic plan and it's related to childcare. So, it's really being called Early Start in Education. Consulting firm is Transform Consulting. They've done this for several other counties across Indiana. They have a really good resume. Their cost came in to just under fifteen thousand. So, right now, we're in process of securing the funding sources for that study. Feel pretty confident it's going to happen. We won't know until next week. Once that is secured, then we'll be starting with that too. And then again, it'll be a lot of public input and ask for help in communicating what we're doing. We're hoping that these two things will give us some really good information to start doing some more strategic planning on where we should be investing and how and on what.
Sounds good. Both, both of those items are very much needed in the county.
I'm taking broadband, housing, and childcare and kind of.
Mixing it all.
Put it all together at the same time as soon as we may have it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Have you called your name yet?
I was trying to lean out of the way.
Skip?
Twelve runs this month. That puts up over a hundred and seventy. Push-in is on the sixth. You're all are invited, so come on out. I think we're going to cook some meat and have a little dinner with it, so you all can come.
What time? It's on the sixth?
Six to the one. At one, I think.
At one?
We got pranks in the park coming up a week from this coming Saturday at, at the park in South End. Be a truck retreat and then a meal and a food and hayrides and pranking on Canal Road. So, be a fun time. Like to ask to use the town wagon if we need it and if we could borrow the town caboose. I don't think we'll use either one of them, but if the crowds like other things have been this year, we may need the extra wagon, so.
On my one favor, I'm using it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I'm not sure. Have we asked for a read or park?
I did it in.
It's in there, okay.
Instead of reading back through the minutes, I just put it.
Okay. I just wanted to double check. Thanks. Yeah. Thanks.
Brad, you got your speech ready?
No, I do not.
He doesn't have cards yet. He doesn't have a speech yet.
Oh, okay. Got anything for us? Any questions?
Not really. Just been crazy busy. They're with the, the back station. That tank should be getting cleaned out the first week of November. He doesn't set a date, but he said it should be that first week. And of course, that valve is replaced too, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Brad and the crew that we've got right now. This is the second, since Brad McRae's been on board, second month in a row. We've not even had a half a page of rereads and nothing on the problem sheets except maybe change a few lenses.
That's awesome.
So, we really appreciate it.
Good job.
They're doing a good job.
I'm hard on them.
Just don't run them off.
So nice to have a full crew, isn't it?
Yeah, it'd be nice when Anthony gets here too.
Yes.
I think Brad McRae finished his gas testing, didn't he? Not recently.
Like, we got him set to be on call November nineteenth.
All right.
Good.
Makes it easier on everybody.
Good.
I'll get back to that in a minute. We got a resolution twenty twenty-one, day one, zero, dash, oh, two. It's paving fund for twenty twenty-one, move to fund two fifty-eight cc grant matching fund. And that's for the community trust. Is that right?
Yes, in anticipation of hopefully getting awarded some. I don't know if state word, but council kind of like it that I've done it the last two years.
They'll change what you're supposed to do.
I make a motion we accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash zero two.
Second.
On favor?
This is, this is part of where Handwrecked and Client's going to do the payroll.
Yeah, they're, well, they're updating our PAM. And then we have to submit the application. It usually should be in January, the next call, but you never know.
If we get that, it's pretty chunky.
That'd be about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's generally allowed, so many streets per application.
What's the grant, green one, four to one?
Seventy-five, twenty-five maps.
Okay, meeting from November eighteenth is going to be here instead of the firehouse. But need to move the December sixteenth meeting to the firehouse if it's available.
I know.
Do you know if it's available?
Thank you.
It should be.
Software.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the annual voice system software update and software maintenance agreement renewal for the amount of ten thousand, ninety-five dollars. That's up six hundred and fifty-five dollars last year, and we need to approve that.
Make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Got a email from Item. They want to set up a phone meeting to discuss the possible grant money to assist in correcting our nitrate level. That is, if they want to do that.
The first week in November.
JD, you know, have, have, we've been doing the testing, or Brad, have you, you know?
I think JD did say that we've been doing the test.
Was it showing any?
We haven't got, I've just talked to the guys on day four yesterday. The ones he sent back have not got anything back from yet. I don't, maybe I'm speaking out. I don't like the state pushing us on this, on this here where we've just now started testing and we haven't found out from any of the farmers or anything about their wells in the state. Because they, last time we talked to them, they wanted us to, you know, look into this and everything. Well, let's find out if all three, you know, let's find out about our wells first, if where this problem is coming from before we.
Yeah, I don't know. If you don't know what you're going to do with them, I mean, how do you go through and around?
Who's asking the farmers to have their wells checked?
We haven't.
We haven't done that?
Debs needed a person to go in.
Wanted to get some testing done.
Yes, on our side first.
Isolate where, what well, if it's one well or multiple wells that have the issue, that might help us inform where we wanted to go. I thought maybe based on this, that maybe some information had been figured out and sent to them. And they're like, okay, now we, so, I mean, I, I guess I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that it would hurt to talk to them and, and say, you know, here, we're still waiting on these test results.
Yeah, I know we can't tell them no, but, you know, let us, let's get a couple of months testing.
I've never got, I still haven't gotten a new agreement from them.
Really?
And, and, and I was thinking about, do I bug them? And I thought, you know, maybe I just, well, I'll let them bug us. So, but, okay. I thought maybe, I thought maybe that's what had caused this, you know, we knew something. It doesn't sound like we know anything more, so.
I suppose that'll be the video. I mean, it's not going to be a phone call or anything.
Well, maybe, who knows?
Yeah.
You know, most people doing my video now, but.
Yeah, I, if you get a timing, if something doesn't set up and. And I think we'd have, Dink, you and I, Brad, Scott, and, yeah. Gary.
Yeah, Gary.
Hopefully, we'll have some results back.
Yeah.
He's still waiting on his copper lead that's been out on now.
Last couple of weeks.
Is that still going to be farmers versus environmental after whatever it is? So, we will wait for their contact for, for their information and sit down and talk to them anyway. Okay. Scott, we need your advice on the issue of running underground power to five twenty-one North Island Street.
Isn't the one where you talked about before, isn't it?
Probably a good thing to study with this meeting. Yes, because.
I said one of those. Should have left long ago.
Okay, is this, is this the alley that runs east and west? Not where they was wanting to come off of and run north? This is the alley that runs east and west.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, in between. That's supposed to go from Ida Cleardown to.
Monroe.
It's south of us, yes.
Yeah, between your two places, right?
Yeah.
And the main thing is, I think everybody lived there forever and either forgot, didn't realize there was an alley there. Because Candy has lived there since nineteen eighty-seven, never knew that there was an alley there. So, when we got to checking with the plant office, realized, I think you said there was an alley, so we checked with them. There's a twelve-foot alley there. But the only issue really is that Jeff and Don Thomas want underground electric run to their big. Yes, that they just built. But if we have to do it by going on somebody's property, we have to have an easement, right? So, I think the main concern is too, is because it's legally an alley, we have the right to use that alleyway as a utility easement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, didn't, didn't the one plant map though have a utility easement going north and south? I thought I saw that on that map.
North and south? Yes, it does north and south.
Which is what you need to do, going from where it is to their building, right?
Six-foot easement. Cut to the maps here. Well, I think.
I thought they wanted to go from the pole from this, on Ida Street or Ida Street. And there's already a utility easement there.
Behind you, well.
That's what I want to get clear.
Between you and Buckhold, us and Buckhold. There's already a utility easement right there.
There is?
Based on that map.
Right there where the fire hydrant is, you're saying, right there.
Here's the alley we're talking about. This is Cindy. This is the other property owner. That's the twelve-foot alley.
Because I met up there with them the other day.
Easement for utilities.
Your husband was out there.
This way.
They was gonna come off that there, and I said, well.
Is there one that way?
That's fine, it's, it's okay with you guys, but then Debbie Buckhold, she owns that lot next to you, doesn't she? So you'd have to talk to her, but.
But I think there's already, already.
But if there's a six-foot.
Between the two.
But it shows it going east and west.
Well, which ways, this is, I think there's a six-foot, I think that, I think there's a six-foot easement that goes north and south.
Yeah, that's already there.
A little one here, Cindy, isn't it?
But that's, they've got a highlighted going east.
Well, I don't think the highlight is for the.
That's the name, is the Johnson, I think that.
I think it's right here, yeah, I think it's right here.
So I think there's already one in place. I think we need to.
I think, yeah, I have to line this up to what I'm looking at here to try and figure it out.
I just wanna clarify before they go to.
No, I know, I know.
It could be a big deal, like a real, real big deal.
But it does say there's a six-foot easement with utilities.
Because the, the thing about it, if we can use that there.
Cause there's already an easement there.
Yeah, right, right, right. And once we're on, so it's going to this service this property.
The trailer we have.
And it's coming from over here somewhere.
Where Cindy's at.
Yeah, there's a, there's a pole.
I'm trying to think.
Pardon me, I, I can't come over.
Yeah, so that's the case.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too.
Six feet wide enough to trench it?
The transformer for your places over there on Ida Street where the fire.
The highlights, just this green.
And that's why I got the pole that's gonna come off of it and go to their building.
Which makes sense.
And there's already an easement there.
Yeah, and that'd be a lot less expensive to run that and it would from Madison all the way over from over here.
Well, you know, if we don't have too many.
Cindy said she thought there was a pole back there.
I don't know. Too many off.
Yeah.
I can tell, I don't know.
Actually, there's two poles in our yard.
Is it?
Yeah, one's right out by the street, halfway.
I think she's a eleven, twelve.
Where the fire hydrant is.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the one they're wanting to come down is the one by the fire hydrant.
Yes.
Yeah. Which is where the easement is.
That makes sense.
What he's saying, six-foot, as long as.
Is that where that fire hydrant's at, you thought?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going north. And then go north, so we could use that six-foot.
Oh, you could use it.
Well, I mean, as long as it's okay with the other landowner, you need, six-foot, you gotta backhoe to fill that, so you may get on somebody's property.
Well, my.
I'm just saying.
Just have to agree to put it back in the original shape.
The, the, we would temporarily.
Yes.
Have to. Put stuff on somebody else, disturb it and bring it back, as long as you're okay with that, yeah.
Anybody said anything to her, or?
Well. I only know that Debbie supposedly signed it over to Kelly and Dale last night.
Okay, okay. I mean, it's not, if, if you don't go this way, they can actually put the underground in here, it's not too far. If you gotta go the other way, the twelve-foot that runs east and west, then you're gonna have to have RMC come in, set another pole, because it's over. It's close, it's somewhere between three or four hundred foot, you can only run that underground around two hundred foot. So you have to set another pole with a transformer, bring the primer on down and everything.
And then come down.
Yeah, and then come down. So if you work it this way, it's fine.
The option is to use the six-foot easement or do what you just said.
Where, where does the power come from, what transformer do they use, Jeff and Don? Where, where does the power come from?
The alley running between.
And then how many people are on it, do we know?
Would be way too far too to run underground, back over to that, be farther than what, what you're looking at on this alley.
Garage on the other alley at the same time there.
So those are the two options, thank you.
That's all I see.
So you need to talk to Dylan and Kelly.
Not gonna be disturbing, you know, you know, there's gonna be underground and hopefully the, the six-foot is. We know about where your land ends or whatever.
We know.
That old tree row.
It's like there, there were a tree row and there is one little stump.
Because back then there.
Kind of by corner of your fence, over that way, that's kind of what we looked at, so where it's got that little hill, it's just like right at the top of the bur.
That's where the old fence used to run, because.
We took it out.
One street didn't run all the way through, that was greasy rubber.
And the tree row when we moved there.
Never gone that long. We didn't.
And that was in nineteen seventy-two.
It's like it was yesterday.
Yes, like it was yesterday.
Okay, I will. I'll get that information from you, Kathy, and I'll make that contact. Give me the thing.
I'll make contact.
Thank you.
So I will ask this, how close is Diane?
I'm sorry?
How close is your, the white fence you got there, how close is it to the property line?
To which property line?
Uh, Jeff and, Jeff Thomas is in there.
Traded corner.
It's actually set back six inches?
You know, I had, the county maybe set it back a foot.
Yeah.
When I put it in there, but the trouble was Kenny Hall's little bitty barn was in the road where. I couldn't set it on the property line anyway, so the fence line's actually. It's, it's on me but quite a ways in places.
It's not, it's not near the property line.
Going north and south by there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, so they could. Line up with it sort of, if, you know, if you knew about.
Sure.
Oh, you mean for the one?
Yeah, to get in the six-foot.
Yeah.
It's basically, there is a rise there, and that's where the old fence went.
Yes.
So it'd be actually the right, it shouldn't be on.
If they're okay with just putting dirt there, then I.
That was the one living thing that was still there.
I, I mean, we can do it, but it's a trench dirt thing.
Oh, yeah, but you know, if you talk to them and they don't want, want it on their property.
We just trench it, be done with it. I leave a lot of mess.
We just need to make sure they understand we'll leave it in the same shape that it was found. Yeah.
I said, bore it.
Bore it.
Not trench anybody.
Yeah, at a good cost. The bore. About ten, nine more to cost trenching.
Well, yeah, these trenches not worried about anybody else.
What, two foots, all we gotta go down for. Right, two foot. For a whacker.
I'll make contact, you're back.
Thank you. Thank you, they're all in, no one, whatsoever, you know?
Bob, you got anything for us?
Nope.
Dan?
I just wanna make sure everybody knows they're welcome to come to Pranks in the Park. Brad, we'd love to see utility truck down there, the kids love it when they can talk with you and see the truck inside and pass out candy and. We'd love to see everybody, fire department, and it's a fun evening, it's a good community event. And it's, it's a lot of fun. And it's one of our major fundraisers during the year, so we hope to get enough money to get that splash pad built soon.
And they trick-or-treating.
October seventh from five to eight. Cause we know. Yeah. That's all.
And you can control it.
Okay?
Nope.
Kathy?
No, I think that was number?
Scott? Five to eight.
Five to eight.
Um, okay, so, um. I am almost done with an update to municipal code. I hope I had it done before I left the office today, but I think it's ready, it's just, I, and I'm gonna have, I'm gonna email it, have Kathy look at it, I'll send copies to you guys too. We've tried to update the code with all the new stuff that's changed since the last time it was updated. Plus a couple typos and things of that nature from the first time, so that we have a current version, then we can put on the internets. As well. I got the co, I got a copy today of the building inspection report on twelve sixty-three North Jefferson. So I, I barely, I just glanced at it for a couple minutes, she, she. Kara, Kara McKenzie was her name, she came from Blueville. And of course, she says it's unsafe and you speak to her now, but no surprise, but she identifies, you know, each, she goes through each element, you know, the roof, the foundation, she talks about, checks some boxes and has some notes and things, so that'll help us. Evidence, or evidence point of view. She also sent an invoice, it was a hundred and twenty dollars, which I thought was pretty fair, she came over and spent. Several hours and, you know, typed up this thing, so I didn't think that was bad at all. I also talked to Mark Hansen, I think is the guy's name, from Suez. He's gonna get us some updated numbers. I told him that I thought he wanted to update their numbers because, you know. Time has passed and they wouldn't be doing the work until next year more than likely. They originally had us paying off the painting part in about seven years, I said, why don't we cut that about half? Try and pay that off a little faster, see what that does to the payments. So he was gonna get those numbers to me hopefully soon, we were shooting to have them before your projects meeting hopefully. I told him I would get some new numbers tonight from Kathy, which I have now, so we could see what we could afford to do. Uh, we took care of, we're working on the title of the fire truck. We sent that, I sent off some today, Kathy's gonna get the rest of it done, I think, to get the new title. I owe that guy that deed, the guy who came and wanted to give the part of the alley, and I've got this new, she's a, it's a long story, but. She's in the St. Mary of the Woods Paralegal Program, and she has had a host of, she had, somebody had COVID, so she was quarantined, then she, now she's got COVID. So I feel bad for the guy, cause he, I know he wants his thing, but I got her working on it, and she's just been out, and I want her to finish it, so. I can't remember, I'm sure there's something else, but. I don't know what.
Yeah, I will.
Send him an email.
Yeah.
You're up to it.